Maybe.
As you have deep pockets, I have people.
Me too.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the order of the regular meeting of the Elmont Village Council December 2nd, 2025. Please rise for pleasure allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance.
President Bank?
Present.
President Protem Steffler?
Present.
Councilmember Feldman?
Present.
Councilmember Glasser?
Councilmember Miller?
Present.
Councilmember Powell?
Present.
Councilmember Snyder?
Present.
The approval of the agenda, I'd like to add under Communications Detective Isaacson's update on the police building. Does anybody else have any other additions or deletions to tonight's proposed agenda? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented with that addendum.
So moved.
Support. Motion by President Protem Steffler, supported by Councilmember Snyder to approve the agenda with the addendum as mentioned. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Communications, DDA informational meetings. They'll be holding in accordance with Public Act 2 PA 57. You're required to hold two informational meetings each year. Those will occur on December 9th at 2025 at 6:00 PM Tuesday and Wednesday, December 10th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. These meetings are for the purpose of informing the public of the goals and direction of the authority, including projects to be undertaken in the coming year and what has been completed. They are not for the purpose of voting on policy budgets or other operational matters. The other communication we had was the SRO report, which was very detailed and appreciated. Does anybody have any questions on either the DDA informational meetings or the SRO report?
My only question about the SRO report is I just don't remember the last time I saw one. I know it's been a little while. If it's going to be a while between us getting them, it's fine. It's understandable. I know he's busy. It's just we get big gaps in knowledge because I genuinely don't remember when the last one we got was. And so, and this begins in October. So it was a couple of months ago maybe that we saw the last one. So can we just kind of get it rolling or some sort of?
Schedule?
Yeah, some sort of schedule, some sort of plan for, you know, I don't care if it's every two months, three months, or quarterly, but something where we don't have a gap in coverage of what we're getting.
Anybody else on the communications? Detective Isaacson, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Give you a little background of myself. I'm a combat vet. Spent six years in the Army. As soon as I got out of the Army, I went to the Detroit Police Department where I worked a couple of different roles, road patrol, as well as in undercover capacity for narcotics. In 1999, I was employed by the Warren Police Department. I was a road guy for about 10 years, a little bit more. I was a field training officer and a member of the Honor Guard. Was promoted to detective, which is a corporal rank. It's a civil service promotion in the Warren Police Department in 2010. Quickly became a Squad One detective, which is a handpicked position. It's their homicide detective. As a Squad One detective, I worked almost six years. I was declared an expert in sex crimes investigations, as well as handled 15 homicides myself with 100% conviction rate. I also worked as a detective in their narcotics division, where I was declared an expert in narcotics investigation. And handled well over 500 narcotics-related investigations, as well as worked in undercover capacity. Was promoted to sergeant in 2018, where I took over our special operations unit, which was a fugitive task force. We were also partnered up with the US Marshals at that time and deputized as US Marshals. I made over 900 physical arrests in my three years there, as well as about 150 high-risk entries. Services of search warrants. I also, as a sergeant, held our job, both jobs in our detective bureau, one supervising the sex crimes division and one supervising the criminal investigations division. Ultimately, was promoted to the commander of the investigative services bureau. I reported directly to the commissioner. That was a handpicked position as well. I had, I have to go back. It's been a while. During my time as a supervisor in the detective bureau there, I supervised over 50 homicide investigations as a first-line supervisor and as the division commander. I had, let's see, 37 officers or detectives that I was in charge of when I finally retired and four civilians. I was there for a year and a half. Part of my duties then was not only supervising the day-to-day operations of the investigations bureau, but assisting and modifying and writing general orders for our accreditation that we ultimately got, as well as preparing budgets and reviews on employees. I have an extensive experience in running a detective bureau. With the chief's blessing, I started about two weeks ago, kind of as a full-time role doing that. Unfortunately, it kind of happened when we had the unfortunate incident up on Van Dyke, the homicide. But it ultimately, it'll probably lighten the load of our Sergeant, Sergeant Raptius. I'm going to take over some of his duties. And it would free him up to be on the road in more of a road supervisory fashion, as well as I'm currently working on some of the older cases that have been unresolved over there to see if we can either resolve them with a warrant being issued or, you know, just get some kind of resolution on some of these cases that have just kind of been spinning their wheels for the last couple of years. Like I said, working with the chief, we're going to be able to take some of the duties away from Sergeant Raptius, the inside duties away from him, so that he can spend more time on the road supervising the road guys, and I can handle those responsibilities. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'll yield to any questions if you have them. One of the biggest things I want to do is try to also repair kind of the relationship that the Elmont Police Department has with the Lapeer County Prosecutor's Office. I'm a personal guy, so I like talking to people. So that's one of my major goals in doing this, is to try to work better along with them. So again, I'll yield to any questions you may have. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the agenda, regular meeting minutes for November 18th?
I did not have any corrections. I will note that you did not include that Councilmember Powell's comment that he would like you to actually use your vacation. I noticed that is absent. I don't have any other corrections.
I mean, it was made in jest, but in all seriousness, I think we should avoid doing what we have historically done.
I totally agree. Totally agree. And I know it was made in jest, but there was serious intent behind it.
Anybody else on meeting minutes? General Fund? Major Street Fund? Local Street Fund? Parks and Recreation Fund? Downtown Development Authority Fund? Sewer Fund? Water Fund? Equipment Fund? Payroll Register Report? No comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Snyder, supported by President Protem Steffler to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes by all council members present. Moving, public comment. It's now time for public comment for anything on our regular agenda? Crickets. Moving on to the regular agenda, the DDA road closure. I'll preface to say that Angela offered to be here tonight. She texted me earlier today to ask because her children have a school function tonight that she really wanted to attend. I told her, I think that we've done this before, and out of respect for her being able to spend some time with her kids, that would be better time spent for her. So she offered to be here tonight to present the road closure, but it's a pretty straightforward thing we do each year. So I let her know that she could spend time with her kids. With that said, DDA is asking on Saturday, December 6th, this Saturday, it's the annual holiday parade, that East St. Clair and West St. Clair be closed from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM, the same time that the street closure for the Van Dyke is closed for the holiday parade and safety. Do we have any questions or concerns regarding that request?
I had a couple of things. The first, I mean, it might be a minor thing, but the map, I kind of hurt my brain a little bit because the Kidder Road and the Bold Line doesn't really match up with the map. And then Huff Road isn't actually, like I spent a little time looking at, like anyone familiar with Elmont, I think, understands, but it could be unclear to people who haven't seen it before. So I don't know if a better map could be made if we're publishing this.
I won't forward that information on?
I have no idea, but I would just assume it's because if you were to zoom out enough to include Kidder and Huff, then it gets so small you can't see any of the local streets.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm assuming that that's why she made them so large and then put them in there to try to give that context. I mean, I don't know how, if you don't mess with the scaling, that she's not going to end up?
That's fine, but I just?
It's just a guess. I didn't create it.
And the closure we're actually approving is the one in town. MDOT approved the Van Dyke closing itself. We don't have jurisdiction to do that. Well, point well taken, and I will mention it to her.
Also, looking at the request in order to close state highway form, some of the dates referenced 2023 and 2020, I don't know, is that because we carry it over every year? Do we need to update the dates to accurately reflect what date it's closing?
Well, this was, I don't know if she gave us an outdated, but this is the already approved by MDOT. They already submitted, MDOT already approved, that's why it's stamped as approved.
But I think what he's saying is if it is approved, it should, sure, they should stay approved.
I don't disagree. So I don't know if she sent us an old one, because it looks like an old one, given the dates on there.
Yeah, we have to, we have to get it approved by MDOT every year.
Right, so?
And I know we did get it approved. It just has different dates.
I'll bring those points up for future to make sure that the detail is there.
Otherwise, I'm good.
Anybody else on the road closure? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the closing of the municipal streets as presented for the holiday parade from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM on Saturday, December 6th, 2025.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Snyder, supported by President Protem Steffler to approve the road closures as stated on the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes by all council members present. Agenda item number two, homecoming committee bylaws. As you know, we wrote the bylaws. The committee had concerns with the bylaws, and we spent a good amount of time with the committee discussing those. And once those were discussed, we, as a council, discussed them and made amendments to what we thought was correct. And then we sent it to our legal counsel, which returned with stating they had no recommended changes. So this is the final version of the bylaws, and we are voting to approve those tonight.
Sort of. procedurally, A, if we find this a final version that we are ready to act on, the first would be a motion to rescind the currently in place, so that we have none in place, then improve these as the new version. So, but that's if everybody's satisfied with it now. But I just want to clarify, we don't just pass this when we already have on the books in existing.
Thank you for the clarification. Do you have any further concerns with these bylaws? If not, I would entertain a motion to rescind the existing bylaws, to, a motion to rescind the current existing bylaws.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Snyder, was that Councilmember Miller? It's supported by Councilmember Miller to rescind the existing homecoming committee bylaws. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes by all council members present. If there's no other questions or comments on the updated bylaws, I would entertain a motion to approve the bylaws as presented.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Councilman Snyder, supported by Councilmember Feldman to approve the homecoming bylaws as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously by all council members present. Agenda item number three, traffic controls. Who wants to handle this one?
Well, if you don't mind, I'll jump in and then let you take over. When I started here roughly 16 months ago, one of the things that I asked the current chief was, do you have a list or book of traffic control orders? He didn't know if he did or didn't. I had an intern, if you recall, for a short time, and I asked that intern to go research at the county level and research at the village level if we had traffic control orders on record. Traffic control orders are designed, you know, they're simply a very specific record of a sign, and the community is supposed to approve them. So, over the years, this community has approved various traffic control orders, but not many. The end result was, the new chief asking him to take over that issue, giving him the data from the intern and what we knew from the county clerk's office regarding traffic control orders. He took it upon himself to redo from beginning to end the entire traffic control order book, which he found, and we now have a 100% verified, in-place, traffic control order book. We've even found we were missing one stop sign that we've since replaced that is consistent with the traffic control order that's in your package. So, I'll turn over to the chief, who did all of the work, he and his staff, to get this up to perfect condition, and now we will put it in the hands of the county clerk so they have a record of the fact that the village of Elmont has all of its traffic control orders in place and recorded.
Thank you. I was assisted by several of our staff members, Sergeant Raptius and Officer Ressler really did quite a bit of work for me, really helped me out so we could speed up the process. There were only a couple of changes that I made, one being that I made a supplemental page. Basically, any of the traffic control orders that are listed in the book had multiple first pages. They just kept adding first pages. So you get like three first pages. I created, all the signs are the same. I just created an actual supplemental page. The traffic control orders are now in alphabetical order, because they weren't prior. They kind of jumped around quite a bit. I don't, I don't know if that was just from years of adjusting and changing them, but I put them in alphabetical order. And then I also added placeholders for streets that actually don't have any traffic control signs, like some of the newer subdivisions don't have a speed limit 25. It's a subdivision. Everybody knows it's 25, but if we ever did want to put a speed limit 25 up, I put that in as a placeholder. So there are several that don't have any street signs, but instead of changing the order again, being it's alphabetical, I just made sure there were placeholders. And then, like I said, we made sure every sign was there. All the signs were up, and we did find where one sign, a stop sign, was taken down. Nobody knows when or where it was never approved to be taken down, but it actually needed to be a stop sign there. So we put the stop sign back up with the help of the DPW.
Now, going forward, if we have an issue that needs to be dealt with, with a sign or series of signs, we will update the book and the council will approve those traffic control orders each and every time. And I assume it'll stay that way through Chief Willis's tenure, which he says will be 10 years.
I've done that for, I heard 15.
Oh.
It escalated.
I have a question. When you go into McIntosh, there's a warning slowdown depth child in the area. When you go on Teeds, there's a slowdown children playing area. When you go down Kidder, there's a stop sign warning sign. Are those considered traffic controls? And if not, how are those cataloged? Or how are those signs implemented? Or how did they get there? And how do we, is that police jurisdiction? Is that village jurisdiction?
Well, the village actually put the signs there. As far as actually listed as a traffic control order, I did not find them on the list of signs that needed to be listed on the traffic control.
I wasn't sure if they qualified as traffic control order, but I know there's signage. So I guess my question is, if a sign's not considered traffic control, do we categorize the additional signs within the village, or is there a need to?
My, the reason that I make a point of traffic control order being correct and consistent is you have to have that to enforce that traffic control order. If you go through a stop sign and you don't have a traffic control order, you very well will have any enforcement thrown out because it was not properly, the public was not properly notified of it. So the warning style sign doesn't qualify. It's not something that has a penalty. So it wouldn't be in that book.
Okay. Back to my second question. As a village, do we keep a catalog of additional signage within the village like that? Or is there a need to, or no?
No, and actually, as I traveled around the community, once I started, I do fairly regular patrols. I ask about those signs. Are they still needed? Should they be removed? Should there be additional signs? And every one of them was very familiar with the DPW director, and he was able to say whether or not the sign needed to be there, should it continue to be there, or did we need additional? So they're aware of them. They install them. If one was damaged, let's say, the police would take a report, notify DPW. It would be, if it was still needed especially, it would be replaced. So there is no catalog kept of those signs.
I got my clarification on both points. Appreciate it. Does council have any additional questions, concerns about the presented traffic control orders?
Can we approve them categorically all at once, or are we about to do 70-plus motions?
You have to speak loudly.
I think he said it was a book.
Yeah.
What would be the proper language for a motion?
To approve the traffic control orders 25-01 through 25-59 as presented.
Daleson, council, have any questions regarding the presented traffic control orders?
Just commenting, I think you guys did an excellent job. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Yes, definitely. And all of staff that was involved in it too, we thank you. If there's no further questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion to approve the traffic control orders as presented.
Is this roll call or just? I will make the motion that we approve traffic control orders 25-01 through 25-59.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Snyder, second, supported by Councilmember Feldman to approve the traffic orders 25-01 through 25-59 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously by all council members present. Number four, remuneration committee. Who wants to handle that one? It's out of my league.
I'll jump in, and Kim can do cleanup if there's anything I miss. Quite a while ago, it was brought up in our list of many things that we'd like to address, bill setting or wherever it came up that. There hasn't been a compensation committee meeting in a long time, and no one really had known necessarily how long. Research was done. It was brought to our attention that it hadn't been done since '08. There was a recommendation in the '08 meeting that it be done every five years. The committee meet, look at what the council is being paid for meetings, and then make a recommendation to increase, decrease, remain the same going forward. In my previous job, there was a committee that did that every three years, I think it was. And in the 20 years, it never changed. But they, they were, no one was unhappy with that. I think in this case, it needs a serious look because it, when it was done in '08, nothing changed. And, you know, of course, that's up to the council to vote, and the vote does not affect you. It affects the next council. So it is one of those things that should definitely be looked at. And so, a memo was put in the packet that we are going to, would like to put together a committee, do a study, and report back with what we find as a committee, the change should or should not be. It's, it's interesting who, we threw out lots of different ideas about who should be on the committee, but we didn't conclude anything. So we'd certainly like your input on that idea.
Stipulated who appoints the committee?
Council appoints.
Council appoints. So if we do this like a normal process for the ways we've done it before, it would be, we figure out what we're looking for, how we want to tell the public so they can then fill out some sort of application or submit something, a request to be on it. Those would then come before council. We would review and either appoint or not appoint, right? Is that, that would be the pretty normal process for how we appoint almost any board or committee, right? So what is unclear is the language of the charter. Doesn't really seem to be any qualifications or nonqualifications or, do we, do we limit this to village residents only, or?
Well, quite frankly, that seems logical to me. But one of the things I thought could be done is to request the chairman of your boards sit on the committee. Say, the planning chairman, the ZBA chairman, the DDA chairman, whoever, then you've already vetted them. They're selected by their committee to lead them. I think it's a pretty safe route, but that's just a first swing at the ball to see if we have a group that you would find acceptable.
Two of those boards, it's the same person, right?
No.
Yes, planning commission and ZBA is the same chairman.
Which, which two?
Planning commission and ZBA.
He is the planning commission and ZBA chairman. He is the planning commission and ZBA chairman.
Okay.
So, you get two, uh, we get one out of that one, then DDA chair, and then who else? You got two out of that.
Two, I thought.
You could have had three, uh, if they were different people, that would be two, and you still need three more people. I don't think that that's a necessarily terrible idea, but should we make that categorical? Because I mean, I don't know, is that set of precedent? Doing it that way? We, we, we're not given any really criteria other than there shall be five people, and you shall pick who they are.
Doesn't have to be done tonight, but just, uh, Kim, I'm sorry, I didn't let you add anything, or?
Actually, there's two people that have already, um, showed interest in being on that committee. Um, Mr. Steve Schneider and, and Mr. Nathaniel Keller, who is on.
I don't get a vote, that's a conflict of interest. For various reasons.
But he's got a lot of knowledge.
No doubt. Anywho, um, uh, so, uh, I assume then you, you had some sort of boilerplate information that you were sending out to them that were seeking people to set up a committee, right?
Yeah, I just threw it out to the planning commission, because that was the only full board that we really had, and, um, thought I'd throw it out there and see if anybody was interested.
Well, we probably should put, yeah, put it out on the Facebook page.
Facebook, maybe, and then maybe a little blurb in Tri-City Times saying that they're looking for village residents who are interested in sitting on this committee. Put a date when we would like applications to buy in the next, you know, before the end of the year or something, and.
Do we necessarily need an application? I mean, what qualifications are you looking for? I mean.
Other than name and how to get ahold of the person?
Right, a letter of interest?
Well, 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 wait, hold on, so one, I, I agree, Facebook, Tri-City Times maybe, and then, and then maybe our website too, just notes to the, and it's, it's difficult for us as a board, let's say, stream of things, we got ten applicants, we can only pick five, how are we supposed to choose if we know nothing about the applicants?
Our normal process is an application for board service, be it planning commission, DDA.
Right.
Homecoming Committee, then we make them pull out an application, then council compensatory, oh, we don't need an application, that, that doesn't have a good look to it.
Yeah, for one.
It does not have a good.
If it already exists, it's not a good.
This is also a, a, a data-based recommendation they're making, correct? Like, they're supposed to actually look at pay scale and wages for other municipalities? What, what, my point is, is, I'm not necessarily saying they have to do the research, I understand you're, you're going to provide them some research, but they're supposed to review, analyze it, and make a recommendation based upon it, so if we were to get multiple applicants, wouldn't you want to know who's got a better likelihood of understanding that type of wage data, making a recommendation on it? I mean, it just seems like it would be, I'm not saying you have to have qualifications, I guess I'm saying I'd like to know why you have an interest and how you might be helpful. Uh, I think that would just be reasonable. Uh, it, they don't have to list specific qualifications. I think the only other thing is for us to determine if we want to set any barriers, like, for example, I, I mean, I, it's my personal opinion that it should be vill, limited to village residents only. Uh, whatever compensation is going to be given to councils coming out of taxpayer funds, and we're talking about using taxpayer funds to pay village council members who represent village residents, so it would seem unfair to then go outside of that pool to let them decide what we get paid.
I agree.
I, I just think that that should be the only limitation, you have to be a village resident.
I agree.
Maybe this isn't necessarily appropriate, but it always comes to my mind that, should we check their background? Say a criminal record, check. Do we do that with our current boards? No? Okay, never mind.
And I don't, I don't know how it's particularly relevant, because we're, put it this way, if you had some minor criminal conviction from twenty-five years ago, how does that compare to, you know, you've got a PhD and have been teaching at a community college for the last twenty years on economics and wage data, you know, I, I, I just don't know that it's relevant in this context.
That just always comes to my mind.
But you also, and council have questions or recommendations?
Looking at the application of the, the village, generic village board application online, it seems like that would serve the purpose. We, it already has most of the information, has a box to check if you're a resident, so.
Right, and, and, and basically allows you to give a CV of a broad application, it was designed with that in mind, it, it does, it is not truly a one-size-fits-all, but it's as close as we've got. Right, so I, I think that that's reasonable to use, or at least a point to that, so they have something to fill out.
I like submitting a letter of interest along with the application.
Well, part, part of the application is you do.
Yeah, they have a little block in there.
Biography, and why are you interested in serving on this board? So there's something right there.
Little blurb?
Yeah.
Even so, um, Mr. Zott, when he just came in front of us, he filled that out as to why he was interested, it was one of the things we agreed should be included.
But also, council. So, are we in consensus with the following? Moving forward, appointing a board, a compensatory board, number one. Number two, they should be village residents. Number three, they're required to fill out the, um, village, um, application, and within that application or separate, include a letter of interest. Did I miss anything?
Deadline. I think first of the year is too soon with holidays, I think we need to give a little more.
January thirty-first? I mean, this isn't something that's.
Yeah, it's not time critical.
No election coming up.
In twenty-six.
Well, so there'll be an election in November when it would take place, and if they, if they form the board, end of January, beginning of February, they're probably going to want to meet at least twice, given ten-ish months to do that, hold off for the next election?
I would think.
Seems reasonable.
Two meetings, I would think.
So, everybody go to January thirty-first deadline? Okay. We have consensus on all those bullet points? Staff is clear with what's going forward? Item number five, resolution twenty-five dash twelve dash zero-one, is that the manager or clerk presenting? They're fighting, they're fighting over it.
Well, it's our normal, um, annual, um, opt-out for, um, our collective bargaining agreements, um, to opt-out of PA one fifty-two, um, regarding healthcare.
The only catch, I, question I had, and I don't know if this applies or not, but did, would POAM switch over to FOP?
Yes, I'm sorry, I used an old memo.
Muscle memory.
What'd you say?
Muscle memory.
Yes.
Just want to make sure the right group is, we're agreeing with them.
Yes, you are agreeing with the FOP.
Council, have questions? This is something we do standard every year to, to meet the, uh, bargaining agreements?
Since, like, what, twenty-twelve, basically?
If there's no more questions or comments, do we have a motion?
We'll make the motion that we adopt resolution twenty-five dash one-two dash zero-one to opt-out of the provisions of Public Act one fifty-two to comply with the collective bargaining agreements.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Schneider, supported by, um, President Proton Steffler, Estee and the record, this is roll call, isn't it?
Correct.
Roll call.
Schneider?
Aye.
Steffler? Aye. Feldman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Motion passes by all council members present through roll call. That concludes tonight's regular agenda. Do we have any polit comment tonight on any non-agenda item? Being done, Andrew Kerverson, do you have anything to bring, council?
Uh, just to, uh, say that I sent an update towards the end of last week that covered many things that are current. Um, we wanted to invite you, I, I think the chief might have mentioned it, but we also want to again invite you to come and look at the, um, changes, improvements inside the police department on the layout and the facilities for the officers and the public. Uh, I think you'll be surprised if you remember what it was like six months ago or a year ago. Uh, so please feel free to come over and take a quick look. Um, there was one more thing I wanted to touch base on, but I'm drawing a blank, so, uh, that's it, and of course, I'm able to answer questions if anything comes up.
Do you have rules?
Nothing further, thank you, sir.
No.
Set.
Um, just a few updates from Park Board. Um, we had our recent meeting, um, where we discussed a few different items of interest that I just wanted to bring to council. Um, one is tennis court renovations. Um, we will likely be coming to both boards early in the next year to talk about funding requests. Um, we've gone through cycles of trying to, um, get this grant funded entirely, um, which has not been successful, and realistically, if we are going to continue to seek out grant funding, um, we are, or will be more successful if we propose a match, and so we would need to get approval from both boards and give us an idea of what we can work with. Um, our current quotes, um, are upwards of two-hundred thousand dollars for like a full tear-out renovation, which is pretty pricey, um, but split between the two boards and grant funding could be feasible, but we understand that that is a large ask. Um, so right now, we're working on, uh, getting some more ideas in terms of scaling it down a little bit in cases too, too large for requests from the two communities. So I just wanted to let you know to expect to hear from us in the next year, um, and get some feedback as we're going into budgeting process to understand what we have to work with for that project. Um, some other items that we're discussing is changes to the rental fees for the Park Pavilion. Um, they're fairly low right now, especially for residents, um, and so we are, um, talking about increasing those fees. Um, we're still in the gathering information phase, we didn't have, um, agreement on a specific dollar amount at our last meeting, um, but certainly if any council members or the community has feedback on, um, rental fees, um, please feel free to pass them along to me or the board in general. Um, we did stream our last meeting, um, so we had a volunteer from Park Board, um, who agreed to get trained, and I, I checked to make sure that it was on YouTube, and it looks like it was there, you can find it under the village heading. Um, so, we're excited to bring that to the community. Um, we also approved to have DPW set up the ice rink for the winter season, um, so that will be available for the community when conditions are right. And I think that's it, unless anybody has any question. All right. All set.
That's your poll. That's it. That's your overall. That's it. We're adjourned.
Would anybody like to walk over? I mean, you don't have to tonight, you could always stop by in five, but.